Somebody who doesn't give a damn about other people.
Not you?
Somebody who doesn't give a damn about other people.
Not you?
All right, good morning, everyone. This is the North Kingstown rescheduled meeting. It is a work session for April 13, 2012, slightly a little bit later than 8:45. But why don't we go ahead? I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to say the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we proclaim its justice and tolerance.
All right, Lorene, if you could call the roll call. Kimberly Page.
Here.
Richard Welch.
Yeah.
Linda Avanzado.
Melvoid Benson.
Yeah.
John Buscarden.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
William Munch.
Julia Halt.
Thank you. All right, we have an abbreviated meeting because we have a number of discussion items from before. So the first thing we have is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do a second?
Second. I would just like to make one point about the consent agenda, if I may.
Yes.
For the approval of temporary plant and ground supervisor. That should be Ned Draper, plant and ground supervisor, 20 hours per week, $31.45 per hour, effective May 7, 2012. Reason that we're doing this, and people have inquired about this, Ned has been doing this job for us all along. As of May 7, he will no longer be the finance director at the pay that he is currently getting part-time. That's roughly $79 or $80 an hour that he's being paid for that work. This would have him continue in the other job that he has been doing until we get a permanent replacement, and that is as building supervisor. He is currently doing that job, by the way, for no money at all, and has been for most of the year. So he is instrumental in overseeing the work that we're doing with the bond and the communication around that, and a lot of other building projects as we get prepared for the summer. So it's really important to have him on board until we find a replacement. As you know, we are talking with the town about some kind of consolidated effort around that, but that's going to take a little time. So until that happens, I'd like to keep Mr. Draper in that position.
We have two other amendments to make. One, yes, just let me make the amendments, please. For retirements under 4D, it is not Joy Arnold. Dr. OJ, could you remind me as to who it is, or is Joy, when to approve Joy Arnold's retirement? When? I didn't get the correction. I had it written down with me before. Okay, and the other one is that Lynn Plotkin's master's degree is not $3,349, is $4,000. Do you remember, Lorene, what it is? I didn't get the change. Is this going to turn out okay? All right, Mrs. Benson, you head.
Well, we have the volunteers, and on the agenda the other night, it was under the consent agenda. I have a question to ask.
Well, ask it.
Thank you. The question is, are we ensuring the volunteers? And what do we have to hit against liability if something happens to the volunteer?
That's why we have to approve them, because by approving them, they fall under the trust. The trust covers them, so yes, they will be fully insured, and you don't have to worry about that.
Well, I wouldn't worry about it, but I just thought it was important to make sure it wasn't, it wasn't spelled out in the last one.
We did talk about that. Joy Lapre is...
Lapre, L-A-P-R-A-D-E.
And did you know what Lynn Plotkin's...
Just ran past me. Why'd I forget that one?
All right, yeah, because I know it is not, it was not, it's the $3,349. Mr. Welch, you had your hand up. Is there something you want to ask about this?
Yeah, just a question on plants and ground supervisor. That's gross, no benefits? That is, it does include benefits. It does include...
Includes benefits, or benefits on top of that?
It doesn't include benefits other than applying toward pension.
Applying toward pension?
Yes.
Isn't that considered a benefit?
As I said, no one of benefits other than...
No health insurance.
And normally, that was listed as $35 an hour. It was reduced in order to cover for that piece.
Okay. I just want that to clarify, please.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. We've made a number of, making sure that we have clarifications. So let's make a, let's make, wait, what's the Lynn Plotkin number?
Lynn Plotkin is masters plus 30. That's what it should be.
Okay.
And what's the dollar amount?
I think if we say as per the teachers' contract, that we'll be fine. Okay, so if we, can I have, we withdraw the motion on the floor and make a new motion to approve with the changes that we have just stated.
I'll withdraw my motion. I don't know whose second is.
John Buscarden.
You'll have to withdraw my second?
I'm making a motion to approve consent agenda, making note of the changes discussed.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we come down to the unfinished business. We have a request to use, to reverse the use of the fund balance. Can I have a motion for that? And I can, we discussed what the motion needs to be, so this, the motion needs to be that $438,876,000 will be taken from the line item in revenue that reads reappraisal of fund balance and move it to, and move it back to the fund balance.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. So we're now coming to the renewal of administrative contracts. We didn't have anything else under the budget.
Budget transfers, number two, A2.
Oh, okay. So we had a budget transfer item.
A2.
Can you, can you advise me what you were looking for here, Dr. OJ? I'm sorry.
I'm going to let Mr. Janelle talk about that.
Okay, usually, we usually try to, at some point in October, November, to adjust the budget to the projection. Basically, because of the court order last week, prior to that, we were in a deficit situation, so we couldn't do that because we had a deficit. Now, because of the court action last week, we're at approximately a $330,000 surplus, so now I can adjust the budget to the projection. That's basically what those transfers are doing, is going through line by line by line. Any item that was over budget, any item that was under budget, we're just moving all the money around to adjust as much as we can to actual. And that's basically, there's about 40 pages long, the detail, to adjust that, about 40.
Oh, can, would you provide with the detail of that at some point?
It's in your package.
It is?
It's, yeah.
Budget transfer.
There should be a summary in the detail.
On my part, I just, I haven't had opportunity to look into the events.
Page, page 117.
About 45 pages long, actually, those line by line.
I apologize, I just had a chance to look at the...
And then there is the summary page by object, just to summarize it.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the budget transfers for FY12?
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Benson.
Mr. Julian, would you repeat what you said about the surplus? I think I understood you to say $100,030 or something.
Yeah, due to the court action last week, our revenue number now stands at the, the town has to appropriate $58,092,043. Due to that action, our budget, and we made approximately about a half a million dollars in cuts last week, we're right now projecting about a $330,000 surplus.
$330,000.
As of today, that's a moving target, just remember that.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the budget transfers for FY fiscal year 2012?
Move.
Second. Are you ready for a good discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, that brings us down to, Dr. OJ, please flag me if I skip over anything.
Okay.
Down to renewal of administrator contracts, Dr. OJ.
There are, there's a 2012-13 budget. I don't have anything on that, other than what Mr. Janelle just said. There's also the CIP, existing bond and future bond, and we discussed that the other night. Just, you know, thank you to the voters for helping us with that, with the bond, and that the work is proceeding to the point that we should be expecting to replace the Davidson Little School this summer, unscheduled. And now, now it will be D, renewal of administrator contract.
Okay, could you explain how it's different than before?
Sure. What, since hearing from all of you the other night, these have been corrected so that they represent a zero increase for the administrators that are listed, and would include the current policy that we have now about, you know, using merit pay with particular employees. So these contracts have been corrected to, you know, to what you were hoping to do with that.
So these are, these are all a 0% increase, that's for these contracts.
Yes.
So what we are looking for here is basically to approve the contract with the 0% increase, and then to take the money that was originally budgeted for these raises to go into the merit pay. Do I have a motion to do that? Yes, I'm asking first if we have a motion on the floor to do that.
The question is related to this article.
Okay, Mrs. Benson, what's your question?
My question is, in reading the contract, and I think I brought that point out to Ms. Carroll at the last meeting I had, it said about being dismissed at the discretion of the school committee. And I always thought that that was devoting the power of the superintendent to do that, because he's the day-to-day person who operates, and we only approve or reject the laying off of employees. And it's all through there. And she said to me at the last meeting, you may ask her when you get back to the office. I didn't get a chance to ask her, and I asked her, and she said, you were right, but within the contract, I read it twice, within the contract for the administrators that sent us is in there.
Well, I think it would be the sort of thing, if we weren't going to rehire administrator, and Mrs. Benson, you can tell me if I'm wrong, it would be, the superintendent would have that prerogative to do that, but ultimately, we always give the final approval for anybody who is retiring, who is...
That is your duty.
Right.
That is our duty.
So I think that's why it could be worded that way.
Well, it's worded a little maybe with...
Ultimately, the hearing in which administrator as well as teachers are entitled to under the law is in front of the school committee.
Yes.
I believe that that's why it's included in there, because the superintendent can recommend, you know...
He can recommend, you know, leave all his twenty brains to the administration.
But it's up to you guys to log with that. So that's why that's in the contract, to give the superintendent.
But it takes the power away from the superintendent.
Well, under the law, that hearing is required, so I don't think it does.
Okay, I'll accept your legal advice, but it takes the power away from the superintendent.
All right, so do we have an approval of these administrative contracts?
Do you have a question?
Yes, Mrs. Avanzado.
Is there a motion? There's no motion. I would make a motion, however, I just have a quick question before I make the motion, and that will depend on what motion I make. I have one concern, and that is about Mrs. Crowley's contract regarding food services, whether or not we are still considering or in discussion about possible outsourcing.
I think this would not take away from that, is my understanding. We can still, we can still look at that and not have to worry that we would still have this...
And, you know, outsourcing models that we have explored, you know, just to get quotes and all that, have included Mrs. Colley as the leader of the group, you know, with current salary in place, so, you know, and that can be amended.
So there would be no legal body?
Once her contract is up, we can, you know, amend anything we need to in regards to that, so. You lost me when you said that.
If two years down the road, if we want to make a change.
I mean, right now, we can include, you know, Mrs. Colley with the current contract. As we move from there, I mean, we could, once the contract is up, we can do just about anything we want.
So if next year, you want to have some discussion on alternate food service, you can do that with her in place as the director. Most transitional programs involve retaining the director of that service. Now, once her contract is up, then you negotiate, whether it's with her and the vendor, as to how, is she going to retain to be an employee of the school department, or is she going to move on to the private vendor, but that's at the end of the contract. But that's usually how it goes, the transition is the school department retains the employee and then, and supervises the private implementation of the services, and then moves into the total.
But I don't have a problem with that, and I happen to believe in having somebody on our staff reporting back to us, not the vendor reporting back to us. However, that's now, and I won't be here then, and I'm just wondering if we shouldn't consider, given the next school committee, a little bit of flexibility in saying it's a one-year or the one-year option, and that gives everybody the option. I don't know how you feel about that, Mrs. Avanzado.
That gives them flexibility.
Gives them flexibility, because then, if you go without outsourcing, and you do, and the school committee decides that, you know, they want to go just with the outsourced and no one else, they have the opportunity of not accepting that, being here. It's got nothing to do with Mrs. Colley, she's a lovely person, I think she's great, and it's not, it's not a personnel thing, it's just, it's just whether or not, you know, anyone feels like they might want to have the option. You're going to be here, John, I'm not, you know, it sells skin. I just throw that out for your consideration.
I'd like to throw something out.
Yes, Mrs. Benson, what would you like to say?
Dr. OJ, did I understand you to say that you hadn't worked out the contract yet?
Did I work out the contract?
That you hadn't.
No, we have not.
Well, could, would it be possible, within working out the contract, that they would, we can't tell them, but give first consideration to the employees we have. I think we owe something to them.
Yeah, that is a different issue, and we can't tell them...
No, we can't tell them, but...
Well, we can say we want Trish Colley to be in that position. We can't do that, or we don't sign the contract.
And so, Dr. OJ, would your preference be, would your preference be that you would like this to be a two-year contract with that for the next two years, and then if we decide differently after that? That's my question.
No, I, you know, I'll do whatever you wish. I think I would prefer it to be two years, just for the sake of Mrs. Colley having that security. And, you know, we can always say, you know, even at the end of the second year, that even if we should start with an outsourcing company prior to the end of the second year, to say when that contract is up, then if we see any different conditions for her contract after that point, we, you know, we'll institute that. I don't have any, any problems in doing things that way. You know, right now, all we have asked for our mark is a quote. We're a long way from getting to the point of actually approving anything, whether it's with our mark or another company that we might bid for, so this could take a while. You know, but for now, I'd just like to, for Mrs. Colley to know that she has some job security for two years. You know, so.
Dr. OJ...
All right, so do we have a motion to form to the table?
I have a question, but hold your purse.
Okay, well, then, I wait till your card on, Mrs. Benson.
You seem to not look this way. Dr. OJ, when you say that you're looking out for Mrs. Colley, and I think you should, will you include anything, any other in the new contract, and as you said, that you just won't sign it if certain things didn't pass? What will happen to the loyal workers that we've had? Because see, one person didn't want to move upon it.
That, that's a completely different issue right now, but, you know...
Will we discuss it?
To answer very quickly, you know, these things are usually written with preference going to current employees for those jobs, so.
I would just like to...
But that is, that is your discretion as a school committee.
Okay, and Mrs. Avanzado?
Can I add a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to renew the administrator's contracts, but I would like, with the proviso, that Mrs. Colley's contract is the two-year option with a one-year option, two-year contract with a one-year option.
It's not in addition, that's a one-on-one.
Yes.
And then, is your motion also then to take the money that was budgeted for the increase to go into merit pay?
Yes, that's my motion.
Second.
And I just, if I could follow up with a brief comment. I don't disregard what you're saying, Dr. OJ, I just feel like the school committee needs to be able to have flexibility, and there may be something unforeseen in the contract that prevents us from doing what we need to do. We've all said many times that we have every intention of keeping and, you know, begging her to stay, and hopefully, she's not going anywhere. And as we move forward with whatever form we do, she will be a part of it.
Yeah, and... I have no problem with that.
Yes, Mr. Buscarden.
And not to mention, Mrs. Avanzado, that if a two-year contract may look to a potential outsourcer as, or service provider as a negative, if they say, lock them, this person being there for two years, we'd rather have it, you know, something different, maybe this will help, you know, it helps through the negotiation process with the potential vendor.
Yes, Mr. Benson, you may say something.
I think it's a, it's a good idea, and I don't think we could ever get anyone better than Mrs. Crowley. She's excellent, she's been in food service for years, worked with some of the biggest companies. But for our average worker, you know, the leader of the team has to have good workers, and the way it stands now, the people who are on the front line, not the general in the wagon, in the jeep, it seems to leave them out there dangling in a certain way. And I think when we do more research on this outsourcing and get it down, I think you will find that one of those companies is in court, and another one's being sued by New York. So I think something should be in here with the effect of giving them a little security.
All right, thank you, Mr. Benson.
Otherwise, I won't be able to vote for it.
Okay. I guess my only concern is I would like to, I would rather give Mrs. Colley a two-year contract than a one-year contract, just to have the continuity, but I can understand the concerns of the committee, so at this time, I'd be prepared to vote for the motion, so let's have a roll call vote, Lorene.
Could we advance the motion?
No, we have the motion on the table. Linda Avanzado.
Yes.
Melvoid Benson.
No.
John Buscarden.
Yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
Yes.
Motion passes, one of them. Thank you. I'm going to leap down and come back up to the green contract, just to please, so can we have a motion to approve the Block Island outsourcing agreement?
So move.
All those in agreement, say aye. Aye.
There's no discussion.
Did you have anything to discuss, Mr. Welch?
Welch, yes. I wanted to compliment our IT department and the administration for their diligent work in trying to get this to come to fruition, and I hope it's a model for both to move forward with other districts and bring more revenue into the district. It's the opposite side of having cuts and layoffs and programs being shut, so.
I second that comment, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth.
I'm sorry, I was remiss in not having that said.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
I have not, I have not, I have not recognized you yet, Mrs. Benson.
Well, please recognize me.
Do you want to say something? Can you say it quickly, because we are running out of time for Mr. Buscarden.
I'll say it as quickly as possible. I would like to say, I think that's an excellent move, Dr. OJ, because Block Island is just a little bit away, you can catch the dairy.
I think you should thank Mr. Booth, he was the architect of the whole thing.
You can catch the dairy in Quonset and get over there in about 45 minutes. You can catch the dairy and, and Quonset, and get over there in about forty-five minutes. It's not that long, and I think that's an excellent idea, and a clear example of our, of consolidation to be able to work with them. I've visited their school, it's a lovely new school, Mr. Booth.
All right. So I'm coming down to policies. If we could approve policy, the amendments to policy, DFD, BE, and the deletion of GCN. Do I have a motion to do that?
Um, wait a minute.
So it's the two policies are being revised and the one deletion, so.
I have questions, so.
I'm about to make a motion for a discussion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So discussion, Mr. Welch.
Oh, I don't know which one this is. You're the policy guru.
That's BE.
Okay. I, I don't agree with, with that change.
I don't think the superintendent is going to be crossed out.
No, I did.
Oh, you did that.
I think.
Well, I think we always bring up our, all of.
To wrestle me out of the meetings? I appreciate that.
No, 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 no. Let me just clarify why I don't, okay?
I go before you.
Just to let the other committee members know that Mr. Welch had, just to let the other, I, I'm speaking. Just to let the other committee members know what Mr. Welch had put down here is that he has crossed out. It would be subject to change by, instead of the superintendent and the chairperson, just the chairperson. Okay.
The, the idea is, this is a meeting of the school committee, period. It's the school committee's meeting. The chair should be the person that runs the meeting and makes the changes. I'm not objecting to anything that you say. I don't think it's, and, and present company excluded, okay? The superintendent should not override the chair of the meeting. So I'm saying that, that if you just make it the chairperson, then the superintendent is, I have no problem with that.
Yes, Mrs. Avanzado.
Well, I recall in our policy, as far as making the agenda, that it's a joint process with the superintendent and chair, and I think this policy has to reflect the same. I think they're both actually somewhat in control of the.
And what you're talking about, Mrs. Avanzado, with earlier in the policy, this is number seven, I believe it's in number four, if five, I might be wrong, where, but it's within the same policy that it talks about the two of them. So I think that that just continues to reflect that the, the agenda is put together by both the superintendent and the chair. So that'd be the only reason why, Mr. Welch, I understand what you're saying, but I think that probably it still should be something that they, they agree upon.
Yeah, that, an agreement, but the ultimate choice should be the chair who, it, it is the school committee meeting.
Okay, if necessary, obviously.
It's a meeting of the school committee.
You know, I, I, you know, there's more attorneys in here than I, you know, than I'm really comfortable with, to be honest with you, and I'm not one. The, the, the relationship on paper is that, that the school committee is like the board of directors, and the superintendent's the CEO, so, and the board of directors supersedes the CEO. Am I, am I right? I mean, you work the best of the, of the school committee.
Correct.
That's correct.
So then I would think that the school committee would, would have say over, you know, I guess I'm, what I'm saying is I, I agree with Mr. Welch.
It's also a point I might add that Mrs. Carroll makes all the time, about this is a meeting of the school committee.
Yes, Mrs. Avanzado.
If you just, if you just have it in the chair, then say the superintendent has something on the agenda that he is not ready to speak to, or he needs moved, because he's conducting the business of the district. If it's just the chair and the super has no power, that doesn't really make sense.
I agree with you.
Well, this is what I would say, is we can keep it like this, and if we see that this has problems, you know, it's wonderful thing about policy is that we can always come back and revisit this. So it's not as if, because currently, I mean, it's the sort of thing of, I'm just saying, we can always come back and revisit it.
Well, unspoken in this is that by vote of the school committee, that's, that would control, the school committee vote would control.
That's correct.
Under the.
That's how it currently is, if anything wants to change to ground. The proposal is to make it something that the, the chair and the superintendent can move around.
And I agree with the change, but if there were a, a conflict, is my point, if there were a conflict, you could still take it to the committee for a vote.
All right.
I think that gives you a step guard.
All right.
That gives you some step guard, in the way Mrs. Avanzado said it, and I agree with her.
All right. So let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
What are we voting on? We're voting on my motion?
To approve items G two, three, and four.
I'm not done yet.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Welch. What this, what the change to G, I mean, I'm sorry, not G, but the change to number seven and BE gives everybody the authority to be able to move the agenda around, so you don't need to have anything.
So you don't need to, need to change that.
Correct.
And I, I would be very happy to see these ground rules elaborated on. We don't need to do it at this point in time, because I don't think that there, I think you need to be able to point to the, the question that comes up on back and forth between the citizens' comments and the board, et cetera. I would like to see that straightened out so that, that we don't have to have that discussion at the table.
All right. So why don't we send that off, back off to the policy committee, that section, but we could still prove this today, and we could look at citizens' comments part of BE at some other point in time.
Right.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, and a second. Lorraine, can we take a roll call vote? Meloy Benson.
Read the motion, please.
It's to approve G two, revisions to policy DFD, collecting gate receipts, G three, revisions to BE, school committee meetings, and G four, delete policy GCN, teacher evaluations.
Um.
Come back to you.
No. I would just like to stay with the provision.
No, this is just, this is just a yes or no. You either go with the vote, or you don't go with the vote. This isn't time for comment.
Well, when is there time for comment? Because this is very important.
We already had that. It's, and now it is the time to say, yes, you vote with the motion, or no, you don't vote with the motion.
No, I don't vote with the motion.
Okay, thank you. John Disgarden.
Uh, yes.
Kimberly Page.
Yes.
Richard Welch.
Yes.
Linda Avanzado.
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Last thing, under policy, can we have, we have done a first read of the food allergy policy. I don't think we need to take a motion, but we're all okay that this has had a first read? So we can have this on for a second read? Okay, great. So now we come down to the, the green school. Dr. O'Jay, would you like to?
On Tuesday night, you know, Mr. Welch and a few, I think just about everybody had a couple of comments here and there about the green school terms. We have them listed. I've included the last provision that, you know, the whole harmless issue and, and the issues around, you know, setting a first year number for, you know, electricity and those kinds of utilities that are year-to-year costs. We don't want to be seat, we don't want to be in a position where the district is taking on more than our share of, of the cost of this building. There were issues around insurance and, and those kinds of things that Mr. Welch brought up. They're all good points. Right now, what you have in front of you is basically just a general set of terms that the administration, or us, you know, myself and, and people from the green school have kind of put forward. What I'm, what I'm asking you for today is that we allow our legal counsel, the legal counsel of the town, and a legal counsel for the green school to iron out the terms generally in the form that we would like them, and give me the discretion to sign once that is all set.
Mrs. Avanzado, and then Mrs. Benson.
I just want to say thank you again, Phil, for this agreement. I think it's a very good agreement, and I, and I appreciate your willingness to, to bring it to the town solicitor. I, I did want to have some involvement of the town council and the town solicitor in this.
Yeah.
And have them take a look, and, and with all, with all those heads involved, it should, the agreement, it sounds like it's shaping in favor of our school district, so.
Mrs. Benson.
I'd like to congratulate you also, and I agree with Mrs. Avanzado about having a town, but is the debt, don't be surprised, you're very smart, and I can agree with you.
Mrs. Benson, go on. Come on, what you'd like to say.
I'm going to say it. Okay, see, this is the question, maybe Mr. Jal can answer it. Is the debt serviced through with Davisville School from the last bond that we had, and we had a bond coming?
I don't think that's an question that we'd be able to answer, because that is a town issue and not something that the schools take on. So we're not going to be able to answer that.
I don't know the answer to that question.
This is what I'd like to say, is that I, I think that we have drawn up the preliminary things that we as a school district want to see for this lease. I do think that any motion that we make today should be a motion that we make that we're sending this to the attorneys to, basically to get the best town advantage, school advantage lease that we can to iron out some of those details, because Mr. Welch, you have brought up a number of good points. And so it would really be safe, we were approving this idea with these preliminary terms, with the attorneys of both the town and the school to work out a lease that is most advantageous to us. Mrs. Avanzado.
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to send the green school lease over to the.
The lease, right.
Agreement, over to, to our attorneys and to the town solicitor as well.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Buscarden.
Or once the attorneys do their thing and work up the, you know, their first, I guess the first run at it, do we look at it again, or are we, are we out of, once those attorneys?
Yeah, the lease would still need to be approved. The turn, the actual lease document would need to be approved, and you would need to give authority for the chair to sign the lease.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Mrs. Avanzado.
Hold on, a very quick point. I think this is a good example of consolidating and cooperating, and we can work with the town on this, and have them look at it, and I think it's going to benefit the town.
Okay.[1686.16]